Well, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District Six. Today is the 22nd of April 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Azari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Pitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All Board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for District Six. We're glad that you were joining us tonight. Just want to give you a few updates on what we've been doing before we continue with the rest of our meeting. And we just finished our work session. In our work session, we got a bond update from Assistant Superintendent Kent Henson and our Bond Oversight Committee. And a lot of that was on the financial spending of that bond. I don't know how many remember, but we went for a bond in 2019, and the community approved that bond. It was a $395 million bond issue. And in that bond issue, we promised to do some really big work. We wanted to rebuild Greeley West. We wanted to build a brand-new K8. We wanted to rebuild Madison and do significant additions to Chaplough and to Krista McAuliffe. And that's what we had promised. We said we would also, in doing that work, get rid of about 33%, a third of our portable classrooms. We had about 142 temporary or portable classrooms at the time. And the work would enable us to get those children in those classrooms into our brick-and-mortar buildings. Well, we just got an update, and we're almost done, by the way, with our bond. We should be pretty well through that bond issue. The building and construction of those five schools is already done, and we're doing some of the other smaller projects now. But we will be done at the end of the summer. And we actually, in terms of what we promised and what we were able to deliver as a school district, we promised, we said we'd have a $395 million. Our bonds actually generated, the bonds that we approved, actually generated much more than that. They generated not $395 million, but $491 million. And so with that, we were able to build and do the work that we promised to do. Not only that, but we were also able to do significant additions at schools like Shawshin and Heath and Martinez and Meker. We were also able to build a new CTE center and a new home for Jefferson Senior, which enabled us to give a new home to Jefferson Junior, which provided a permanent home for Fred Chardis. We were able to do a lot more of construction, well, furniture, than we thought we would be able to do. And all of that, all of that, we've been able to do because of good planning. It was incredible planning on the front end and knowing what we needed. It also, we were able to sell bonds at the rate we were because we had a good credit rating, and we had low debt, and we were prepared for that bond issue. We sold bonds on January 22nd, after we passed that on November, whatever that was, the election day in November the year before. So it took only two months from the time we passed the bond issue to actually selling bonds. And that is great execution when you can do that. It takes great finance. It takes great planning from our facilities team and any number of other teams in this building. And so I just wanted to say thank you, as we approach the end of this, to our administration, because what we've been able to do is that we were able to do so much to deliver on time and on schedule, on budget, on so many things. We did that because of great execution. And so thank you to our administrative team who pulled that off. They had people interviewing for our owner's rep the day after that bond issue passed. And so congratulations to them. It's been an incredible effort by the school district and by this administrative team. We appreciate Dr. Pilch and all of you who've delivered on that promise to our community. And I also want to thank the community for passing that when we did. Had we, we did not know, none of us knew, that just a few months after we passed that, that we would enter into a pandemic, that things like steel would go sky-high. Had our community waited and said, well, you know, maybe not this year, maybe next year, or maybe in two years, the cost of doing that would have been at least 20 to 30% more than what it cost us. And so we're incredibly thankful to this community for the passage of that bond issue. We hope this community is very proud of what we've been able to do with those bond proceeds. And so thank you for that. Second, tonight, I did want to update or advocate for a particular piece of legislation that's in our House right now, and it's called House Bill 1448. And that's not something we normally do. That's not something we've done as a board, or I cannot remember a time that we've said, this particular piece of legislation is incredibly significant and would mean a lot to our students. But this one would. And what this particular piece of legislation does is fix our funding formula. It's a funding formula that is far out of date. I think I read something that Nikola Jokic wasn't born, or was being born when that was being introduced. But what the funding formula we have now does is it funds school districts based on the geography of the school district. It funds districts. What we would like to see, and what this district has been arguing for over 10 years, is a funding formula that would fund students. It would fund students based on what they need. You know, we talk a lot about equity in our district, and I think sometimes that term is misunderstood. But equity is simply giving students what they need to be successful. The oldest and greatest symbol of equity is a school bus, right? Because when students don't need or can't get to school, they need a ride to school, and we provide that. Equity is providing meals. Equity is providing GT teachers for the GT kid who needs that teacher. And so what we would like in this district, and what we think is appropriate for this state, is a funding formula that is equitable and is just, and where students are given what they need to be successful in the classroom. We have 71% of our students that are in poverty in this district. And what that means, every district has students with poverty. But when you have 71% of your students that live in poverty, what that means is you have to program for poverty. And that's why I think we're up to every school. If we're not, we're pretty close. Every school in this district has a food pantry. And I don't mean just, you know, a shelf, right? We have rooms dedicated to making sure our students get fed. This funding formula would better fund students in poverty. It also better fund students who need English-language helps and programs. And we provide a lot of those in District Six. Over 30% of our students need English-language helps and services, and oftentimes, that's an extra teacher in the classroom. And so again, that funding takes, or that programming takes a lot of funding. And funding, we have longed for the state to provide. We are very thankful that we live in a community that supports us so well and has passed an MLO. It means everything to this district. But we need our state to fund our students the way they need to be funded, fund them so that they can be successful in the classroom. And so if you have any ways to contact legislators, legislators, if that's something that you do, please contact them. Let them know that this means a lot for your school district, House Bill 1448. And that's all I have tonight. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. And I think that's our superintendent's honor roll.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board. I am honored tonight to recognize Greeley Corral, the Greeley Corral, and some of you are here tonight, and Amy Long. Would you and your guests come to the podium, please? So Amy is one of our teachers at Greeley West High School. And tonight, I am recognizing them on the superintendent's honor roll for a partnership that Greeley West and the Greeley Corral have formed together, and for your tremendous support of the students at Greeley West High School, from the adults in the Greeley Corral. I understand that you have with you Mr. Nick Gilmore, the president of the Corral. Yes, we're going to give you a chance to talk here in just a minute. Okay? First, I want to share a little bit about why we've chosen to honor them tonight. So Ms. Long's poetry class submitted a poetry, and they submitted it to local composers. And three of the students' poems were written into composition that the school choirs will sing, perform at the spring concert, I would presume the final concert of the year. We could not have done this without the funding of the Greeley Corral and the support of the crowd, bringing in a local poet and composer to do this work for our students and with our students. And so we're just so thankful. We have so many partnerships here in District Six with community members and community organizations. And this is just one of many that come together to ensure we're doing as much as we can for our students here in District Six. So Amy, will you tell us a little bit more about this? And if you want to pass it to Mr. Gilmore or any other guests?
And we just finished our work session. In our work session, we got a bond update from Assistant Superintendent Kent Henson and our Bond Oversight Committee. And a lot of that was on the financial spending of that bond. I don't know how many remember, but we went for a bond in 2019. And the community approved that bond. It was a $395 million bond issue. And in that bond issue, we promised to do some really big work. We wanted to rebuild Greeley West. We wanted to build a brand-new K-8. We wanted to rebuild Madison and do significant additions to Chapllo and to Krista McAuliffe. And that's what we had promised. We said we would also, in doing that work, get rid of about 33%, a third of our portable classrooms. We had about 142 temporary or portable classrooms at the time. And the work would enable us to get those children in those classrooms into our brick-and-mortar buildings. Well, we just got an update, and we're almost done, by the way, with our bond. We should be pretty well through that bond issue. The building and construction of those five schools is already done, and we're doing some of the other smaller projects now. But we will be done at the end of the summer. And we actually, in terms of what we promised and what we were able to deliver as a school district, we promised, we said we'd have a $395 million. Our bonds actually generated, the bonds that we approved, actually generated much more than that. They generated not $395 million, but $491 million. And so with that, we were able to build and do the work that we promised to do. Not only that, but we were also able to do significant additions at schools like Shawshine and Heath and Martinez and Meeker. We were also able to build a new CTE center and a new home for Jefferson Senior, which enabled us to give a new home to Jefferson Junior, which provided a permanent home for Fred Chardis. We were able to do a lot more of construction, well, furniture than we thought we would be able to do. And all of that, all of that, we've been able to do because of good planning. It was incredible planning on the front end and knowing what we needed. And also, we were able to sell bonds at the rate we were because we had a good credit rating and we had low debt, and we were prepared for that bond issue. We sold bonds on January 22nd, after we passed that on November, whatever that was, the election day in November the year before. So it took only two months from the time we passed the bond issue to actually selling bonds. And that is great execution when you can do that. It takes great finance. It takes great planning from our facilities team and any number of other teams in this building. And so I just wanted to say thank you, as we approach the end of this, to our administration, because what we've been able to do is that we were able to do so much to deliver on time and on schedule, on budget, on so many things. We did that because of great execution. And so thank you to our administrative team who pulled that off. They had people interviewing for our owner's rep the day after that bond issue passed. And so congratulations to them. It's been an incredible effort by the school district and by this administrative team. We appreciate Dr. Pilch and all of you who've delivered on that promise to our community. And I also want to thank the community for passing that when we did. Had we, we did not know, none of us knew, that just a few months after we passed that, that we would enter into a pandemic, that things like steel would go sky-high. Had our community waited and said, "Well, you know, maybe not this year, maybe next year, or maybe in two years," the cost of doing that would have been at least 20% to 30% more than what it cost us. And so we're incredibly thankful to this community for the passage of that bond issue. We hope this community is very proud of what we've been able to do with those bond proceeds. And so thank you for that. Second tonight, I did want to update or advocate for a particular piece of legislation that's in our House right now, and it's called House Bill 1448. And that's not something we normally do. That's not something we've done as a board, or I cannot remember a time that we've said this particular piece of legislation is incredibly significant and would mean a lot to our students. But this one would. And what this particular piece of legislation does is fix our funding formula. It's a funding formula that is far out of date. I think I read something that Nikola Jokic wasn't born or was being born when that was being introduced. But what the funding formula we have now does is it funds school districts based on geography of the school district. It funds districts. What we would like to see, and what this district has been arguing for over 10 years, is a funding formula that would fund students. It would fund students based on what they need. You know, we talk a lot about equity in our district, and I think sometimes that term is misunderstood. But equity is simply giving students what they need to be successful. The oldest and greatest symbol of equity is a school bus, right? Because when students don't need or can't get to school, they need a ride to school, and we provide that. Equity is providing meals. Equity is providing GT teachers for the GT kid who needs that teacher. And so what we would like in this district and what we think is appropriate for this state is a funding formula that is equitable and is just and where students are given what they need to be successful in the classroom. We have 71% of our students that are in poverty in this district. And what that means, every district has students with poverty, but when you have 71% of your students that live in poverty, what that means is you have to program for poverty. And that's why I think we're up to every school. If we're not, we're pretty close. Every school in this district has a food pantry. And I don't mean just, you know, a shelf, right? We have rooms dedicated to making sure our students get fed. This funding formula would better fund students in poverty. It also better funds students who need English language helps and programs. And we provide a lot of those in District Six. Over 30% of our students need English language helps and services, and oftentimes, that's an extra teacher in the classroom. And so we, again, that funding takes, or that programming takes a lot of funding. And funding we have longed for the state to provide. We are very thankful that we live in a community that supports us so well and has passed an MLO. It means everything to this district. But we need our state to fund our students the way they need to be funded, fund them so that they can be successful in the classroom. And so if you have any ways to contact legislators, legislators, if that's something that you do, please contact them. Let them know that this means a lot for your school district, House Bill 1448. And that's all I have tonight, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. And I think that's our superintendent's honor roll.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board. I am honored tonight to recognize Greeley Corral, the Greeley Corral, and some of you here tonight, and Amy Long. Would you and your guests come to the podium, please? So Amy is one of our teachers at Greeley West High School. And tonight, I am recognizing them on the superintendent's honor roll for a partnership that Greeley West and the Greeley Corral have formed together and for your tremendous support of the students at Greeley West High School from the adults in the Greeley Corral. I understand that you have with you Mr. Nick Gilmore, the president of the Corral. Yes, we're going to give you a chance to talk here in just a minute, okay? First, I want to share a little bit about why we've chosen to honor them tonight. So Ms. Long's poetry class submitted poetry, and they submitted it to local composers. And three of the students' poems were written into composition that the school choirs will sing, perform at the spring concert, I would presume the final concert of the year. We could not have done this without the funding of the Greeley Corral and the support of the crowd, bringing in a local poet and composer to do this work for our students and with our students. And so we're just so thankful. We have so many partnerships here in District Six with community members and community organizations, and this is just one of many that come together to ensure we're doing as much as we can for our students here in District Six. So Amy, will you tell us a little bit more about this? And if you want to pass it to Mr. Gilmore or any other guests that you want to introduce who are here with us tonight?
Absolutely. Thank you, first of all, for having us here. I'm Amy Long, and I teach theater and ELA at Greeley West High School. Over the summer, I had been speaking to members of the Greeley Corral, and they wanted to reach out into the community because they want students to come to their shows, they want to do good things and provide good art for students in our community. And they were talking about how they were hoping to partner with a local poet and get into classrooms where students could write some poetry, be inspired by people whose craft is poetry, and then hand that off to composers. So I said, "Hey, I'm teaching poetry. I would love to have this project in our class." So I met with Mariah Foster, who is a poet in Greeley, Colorado. She couldn't be here tonight, but she says hello. And she came in and team-taught with me for several weeks. I think about three weeks she came in, once or twice a week, and she worked with our students. And the beautiful thing is she came in as an artist, and she brought her craft, she brought the poets she knew, which was not just the canon that we teach in school. And so the students were really inspired by the work that she brought in, and we worked together with the students. And at the end of January, they all submitted pieces to me and to Mariah. We read through all of them, and then we handed them off to Nick Gilmore and Eli. I don't know Eli's last name. Shemay. And I'm going to actually hand off the podium to him right now.
Thank you. My name is Nicholas Gilmore, and I'm the president of the Board of the Greeley Corral. And I am a local conductor, composer, arranger. It's what I do for Greeley and work with a lot of local artists and local performers to do different projects. And one of the things at the Corral that we really wanted to do was trying to incorporate ourselves into the education system and try and offer opportunities for students who are hungry for the art but don't know how to tell us that and hungry for the ability to be able to create something, but again, don't know where to start. And so this is a wonderful opportunity to do that. And so when we got all of the poems from all of the different students that we were working with, Eli and I, we wrote the music together, sat down with the teachers, and we sat down with poet, and we read through everything and said, "Which of these poems not only represent the kind of experience of the students themselves, but also leans itself to be set to music?" And so we landed on three different poems and went about going to set them. And we worked with the teacher Rosie over at West, who is absolutely fantastic, and were able to set a three-movement choral piece so that we can incorporate two of their choirs, a full SATB choir and then an SA choir that is slightly smaller, in order to show students that the words that they say are important, but also the art that they create musically is important. And so the students now have ownership in original pieces of music and art that they can say, "I did this." And that's a really magical thing, I think, especially from a person who was a student, myself at one point, as many of you likely were. And to say, as they move forward, "Wow, my voice actually does matter, and it matters in a way that I wanted it to be put forth." And so in this project, I think we were able to hopefully accomplish some of that and let the students be aware that what they have to offer is important.
Thank you so much. So this is Greeley. Music invitation. Do you want to turn it off? Yeah, okay. So I'm giving you an actual invitation to our choir concert, which is on May 14th. Dr. Pilch has all of the invites, so you can put it on your refrigerator. But we would love to see our board there and community members there. I think it'll be really beautiful. We're hoping our poets can come, our team-teaching poet who shared with the kids, as well as our Greeley West choirs. So thank you very much.
Thank you both for being here tonight. And Dr. Pilch, is that all honor roll? Okay, good. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And so if someone would be so kind as to make a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley, Evan's School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda tonight? Hearing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Zari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is Project Teacher Find recognition. So I see Ms. Overton coming to the podium. Dr. Pilch, is there anything that you would like to say in advance?
I'm happy to introduce to you Mrs. Overton, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And she has with her Director in Human Resources, Amy Spruce, and I believe a couple of our students who are going to be a part of Project Teacher Find, who you're going to learn a little bit more about tonight. Ms. Overton.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening. It's exciting to bring this presentation to you every year. It's a very rewarding experience for us in terms of teacher pipeline, in terms of developing and growing our own. And so I'm going to turn it over to Director Spruce, and she will proceed with the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Annette. Good evening, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and the members of the board. I am so pleased to present to you this year's scholarship recipients of the Project Teacher Find Scholarship. As you may know, Project Teacher Find is a cooperative initiative between UNC and District Six to identify and recruit District Six students to become educators. Annually, District Six and UNC work together to encourage students to become educational leaders by providing an opportunity to apply for the Project Teacher Find Scholarship. The Project Teacher Find Committee, made up of UNC and District Six staff members, has completed their scholarship interview process of our two candidates. They are District Six seniors, and both students are pursuing their education degree at the University of Northern Colorado beginning this fall 2024. Both candidates were very impressive and will each receive a yearly $2,500 scholarship. The scholarship is another collaborative effort between District Six and UNC as we work to identify and develop future educators. Through this ongoing partnership, we will increase the number of outstanding students at UNC and continue to grow our own teachers here in District Six. I am excited to have both recipients join us tonight, Katie Hartman and Jaybez Morales. Their teacher candidate instructor Lauren Appelhans also joins us tonight to celebrate, and I'll turn the mic over to the students.
Thank you for having me again. My name's Katie Hartman. I am a senior at Greeley Central High School and as well as a CTE center. And I am a teacher candidate and a proud recipient of the Project Teacher Find Scholarship. I will be majoring in biological sciences for secondary education, and I'm a proud first-gen student, and I'm dedicated to being a UNC Bear. This path is an important one for me because it allows me to be, to do the one thing I love above all else, which is learn. I spend much of my free time watching videos and listening to podcasts about new developments in science, weird or interesting questions math and science posed to us, and thinking about endless possibilities that lie beyond our planet. These questions fascinate me, and I want to create a sense of wonder and curiosity for my future students as well. The scholarship will give me the opportunity to keep learning and teach me how to be an effective leader and foster that same excitement in a supportive and highly academic space. I also aim to be a pillar of support for marginalized students, whether they are gay, people of color, or English-language learners, or students of every other identity, because I know the importance of having a friend when you feel alone. And while I, just like every other teacher, cannot understand every single thing about a student's background, it is my goal to foster a loving and open environment where students can be themselves, share their experiences, and respect each other. Thank you to the members of the Scholarship Committee, Weld School District Six, the University of Northern Colorado, and to you board members. Thank you.
My name is Jaybez Morales. I am also a student at Greeley Central and the CTE Center. My plans are to major in early childhood education at UNC. I really enjoy learning, and with this scholarship, I am able to continue my education and continue to learn how to better myself as a person and how to become a better teacher. I plan on going into early childhood education to become a kindergarten teacher. I really enjoy children and watching their minds as they learn or discover the world. I enjoy watching them grow and mold into little human beings. Being a Chicano male is, I feel, very important to have that representation inside the classroom, especially at an early age. For myself, I never had a male teacher until I was in middle school, and I don't think I recall ever having a Chicano teacher. And so being able to be that representation inside a classroom is very important to me. I would like to thank the members for the scholarship and the board for giving me an opportunity to continue my education and become a better person while learning. Thank you.
So President Matthews, I would appreciate it if you would come up here, and we'll take some pictures with the students as they get their certificate.
Dr. Campos Spitsy has a question.
More of a comment for Katie before you stop. I was wondering, so your sense of wonder and what's beyond, you know, our galaxy and our planet, have you watched The Three-Body Problem on Netflix?
No, but it's on the list.
Okay.
Definitely on the list.
Cool, that's all.
No, thanks.
Ms. Mash.
I just want to think, I guess I'm not exactly sure when we instituted the Project Teacher Find and our pathway, but in a time where we know that there are fewer teacher candidates out there, I love the Grow Your Own. I love that there are students who want to come back and give back to our community. So I'm really excited to see Katie and Jaybez return to us in four years, and thank you for providing that opportunity.
It started in 1988. Ms. Spruce just informed me of that. That is a long time, and it is part of Innovation 2030. So we do that, and they will be guaranteed an interview and anywhere in the district that they apply. They'll at least be guaranteed an interview. We look forward to having them back, too.
Ms. Sullivan.
My apologies. I was just curious, how many teacher candidates do you get for applications each year for this?
Oh, for Project Teacher Find, it varies. So this is my fifth year. We've had up to seven and as little as one. As long as we're right around four or under, we usually can get everyone scholarshiped. So, but hopefully it gets to be a bigger candidate.
I'm not seeing any other questions from board members. And so I'll just say thank you, thank you not just for being here tonight and for this recognition, but for the work. Again, this is such an important part of our district and being able to grow our own teachers from our own classrooms, and we appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next tonight on our agenda is our superintendent's report. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, President Matthews, and I want to say how much I appreciate you making the comments you made about the School Finance Act and the possibility of a new finance formula moving through our legislature. So we'll keep our eyes on that. Two things tonight, I'm first pleased to introduce to you our latest recommendation for hire as an assistant principal, Mr. Daniel Cahoon. Daniel, would you stand up and give the board a wave, please? So Danny, as he goes by, will be the new assistant principal at Shawshine Elementary School. We're so excited to have him come over here. He's a community member, and I actually had a chance to meet him the day before convocation. He was out at Greeley West and told me that he worked in another school district, and I said, "What the heck?" And so I was really excited to see him in the candidate pool. And when I got to meet him last week during the interview process, he began teaching in 2012 as an elementary school teacher at Pete Merrick Elementary School over in Weld RE1, just our neighbor right next door. And he was a teacher for eight years, and then he became an instructional coach four years ago and has been working as an instructional coach. And now he's coming to us as an assistant principal at the elementary level. And one of his references said that they would hire him in a heartbeat and that he was always welcome to come back there, and they were really sorry to lose him to District Six. But we're certainly glad to have you over here. Mr. Cahoon obtained his Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Ed from the University of Northern Colorado. He has a Master's of Integrating the Arts in Education at Leslie University in Massachusetts, and he's finishing up his principal license this spring. He's on his final class, has passed his tests he has to pass. So once he finishes that last class, we'll have him here as assistant principal, pending your approval tonight. Welcome, Daniel. We're glad to have you. And then I'll just close with a reminder, you all did a calendar review earlier, but this is one of the very busiest times of year in a school district. We're rounding down on our last four weeks of school, really. We will be starting our first of eight graduations that will be held here in District Six on May 22nd, so it'll be here before we know it. We're just beginning AP testing and final capstone projects for seniors, so it's a very busy time of year. Lots of honors programs and concerts and final celebrations at all levels in the district. So I hope that you'll have a chance to attend what you can, board members, and again, invite our parents to partner with us and join as much as they possibly can. So by the time we come back together next, we will be, almost be at the end of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda is Innovation 2030 update, strengthening partnerships, Goal One and Two, family partners and external stakeholders. So I'd like to invite our presenters to the podium. Welcome, Dr. Dattery.
All right. Thank you very much, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and members of the board. It is with pleasure tonight that I, along with others, bring to you an update on strengthening partnerships. We are bringing to you this update on both Goals One and Two. And so joining me this evening will be Ms. Teresa Myers, who will really talk about Goal Two, after Mr. Luis Camas and Mr. David Reyes and a few others share more about the actions that are happening and occurring in the district on Goal One. So as we know, all of our strategic plan updates to you are grounded firmly in the mission and vision of our district. And when I look at the vision and I read, "District Six engages and powers and inspires today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world," that's what this entire update is all about. And as we really looked at the values, all these values are very meaningful to us in our work that we do. But the two that really stood out in this particular update to you is that we build positive relationships with students, families, and communities, and that we promote access, opportunity, and choice, and the importance of that. And so while all four of these are focus areas in I-2030, certainly strengthening partnerships is the update for this evening. Goal One, as I mentioned, is on strengthen, is to strengthen relationships with parents and families. So there's many different actions that have been occurring in this area under these two objectives. Objective One is to develop and implement a comprehensive district-wide family partnership plan that will be utilized at every District Six school. And second, to develop and implement staff training to partner with families to fulfill the district-wide family partnership plan. So within those two objectives, in Goal One, we have three outcomes. And the first is that schools will include and implement a family engagement goal or strategy within their UIP. The second is that families will indicate their satisfaction of, within the climate of their school, their child's school, and we measure that on the annual parent survey. And the third is around school-based staff being trained to effectively know how to create those family partnerships and use those strategies so that it really does impact student learning and achievement. So I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Luis Camas, who is going to share with you a few of the actions that we are taking this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Good evening, President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Our team behind me will share success stories and highlight the actions that are connected to our goal of strengthening partnerships with parents and families. We are so grateful for the work that our parent advocates have done in our elementary, middle, and K-8 schools. They play such a crucial role of creating and maintaining authentic, meaningful, and collaborative relationships with our families. Their efforts help create a sense of belonging and inclusion for our families and all of us need to thrive. Specific actions include monthly professional development opportunities for our family advocates with the goal of providing them with more knowledge to better serve our families. This included high-impact strategies when working with families that will establish and maintain trusting relationships, as well as improving two-way communication between families and schools. Additionally, we have conducted cultural proficiency training, which furthered the implementation of voice visits through ongoing training and support. Finally, this school year, our Mother Read and Father Read program has expanded to seven Joining us this evening is Julia Madera and Connie Rodales. Julia is our parent advocate at Chapala and Connie is a parent at Chapala. Julia's dedication and servant leadership has had a positive impact on her parent community. According to Mr. Chris Kiefer, her principal who's here this evening, Julia has been able to build parent partnerships by providing timely communication on school events and empowering parents to be a part of their child's educational journey. Seeing our parents experience joy in learning alongside their child is what we want to see throughout our schools. Julia and Connie will now share their experiences with us.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julia Madera and I am the parent and family advocate for Chapala. And I would like to start by saying that I'm really thankful for this opportunity to be here in front of all of you to talk a little bit about some of the work that I have been doing with our families and more specifically the Mother Read, Father Read program for its first year at Chapala. I worked along with Carlos Bravo, a migrant education advocate, to facilitate this six-way program. We worked with parents, no matter what their reading level was, to practice reading, writing, and crafting small projects to take home and apply what they learned during those lessons with their children. Together, they learned to create reading routines that will improve each other's literacy skills. The curriculum included English and Spanish book selections that focus on real-life experience themes such as socio-emotional, cultural diversity, and family values, which help parents relate the books to their personal lives. What we learned through facilitating this class is that the students need their families to be involved in their education for them to feel supported, not only at school, but also at home, just as the parents need to feel connected to their children's education so they feel confident to go inside their schools, ask questions, and advocate for their childrens and themselves. We aligned Mother Read, Father Read's missions to the district's Innovation 2030 Plan of Strengthening Partnerships. This class engaged families to their students' education, which strengthened, if not initiated, a trusting relationship with school staff. Because we know that family engagement equals student success, we want to continue to partner and collaborate with families and this specific program defines the vision that we want for our district. We're very proud of the work that we have been doing at Chapala to continue to grow trusting relationships with our families and I look forward to more benefiting engagement projects and my hope is that we get to implement those at all of the schools in the district. Now I have the pleasure of presenting to you the mother of one of our students in the school at Chapala, the Mrs. Connie Rodales, who would like to share about her experience with the program. Thank you.
And as we, as we transition to our parent, if you would like to go ahead and put on your translation devices. Yes.
Hello. I'm apologize because my English is not really good, but I want to do it in Spanish because I don't want to do a mistake in English. Buenas tardes. Como dijeron ya, mi nombre es Concepcion Rodales. Me llaman Connie porque es más fácil de pronunciar. Y con respecto al programa, a mí me ayudó muchísimo porque mi hijo está en kinder. Toda mi educación fue en México. Entonces estoy empezando a conocer todo lo del nivel escolar, todo sobre las escuelas apenas. Y este programa me ayudó a tener confianza en mí misma y en hacerle, bueno, ver que mi hijo estaba viéndome que yo iba a las clases, aprender cómo leer un libro realmente para un niño de kinder, con los sonidos, con las voces, de enseñarle, o sea moverle todo el libro página por página y que tuviera chance de hacerme preguntas. Aprendí también de todo lo que se deriva de un libro, de sacarle actividades, este, entre mi hijo y yo, hacer actividades como pinturas, este, para hacer títeres también para jugar con los libros. Y me ayudó mucho con la confianza en, en no tener miedo, en preguntar y aprender sobre la educación y cómo ayudarle para que fuera, para que sea una mejor persona en el futuro. No conozco mucho sobre la educación aquí en Estados Unidos y, y me, me dan muchos nervios el hecho de saber de no aprender, de no hablar 100% inglés. Y este programa me está ayudando mucho y me ayudó en ese tiempo, en que no importa si lo pronuncio bien cuando le leo los libros en inglés. Él me está ayudando a, a que yo tenga confianza. Y justo ahora que me dijo, vas a ir una junta con el programa que hiciste, y le digo sí, platiqué con él, y le digo voy a ir una junta para decirle lo que me ayudó este programa a estar en contacto contigo y tener mejor comunicación. Y le digo a Julia que me dio dos libros, me dijo llévatelos, este, para que le enseñes y tengas confianza. Y se me hizo algo muy, muy bonito de decir que, de, estoy dejando una huella en mi hijo que se está acordando de las cosas que estoy haciendo por él y la confianza que me dieron Carlos y Julia en el programa para, pues sí, para aprender y dejar todos los nervios y, y aprender por él y para él. Y supongo que, bueno, no supongo, más bien este programa nos va a ayudar a los papás que queremos involucrarnos en la educación de nuestros hijos, a tener más confianza y más comunicación con ellos, sobre todo en la lectura, que es lo que todos empezamos en la escuela. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Julia and Connie, for sharing your success with our board this evening. And just real quick, I have seen that throughout our system, our parents really are asking to be a part of our children's education, whether that's elementary, middle, or high school. And also too, I know there's administrators on our, in our board meeting tonight, they're part of our team as well. Mr. Chris Kiefer, Ms. Jill Barnes, Mr. Banda Jones, all of our leaders really, really embrace parent partnerships and we're very thankful for that. Beginning next school year, we are very, very excited to announce that we'll have a new communication platform called Final Site as a District. This will help in streamlining communication and improving access to information for, for our families. Final Site has the capability of two-way messaging in over 100 languages. From ongoing research, we know that a way to strengthen our partnerships with families is by providing them with communication in their first language. This important step could not have been possible without our Communication Task Force. This team of staff, parents, school, and district administrators came together for a span of four separate evenings to do the following. Identify over 40 communication platforms that are currently being used in our district. I'm going to repeat that one. Identify over 40, and that's being kind, communication platforms that are currently being used in our district. Created a central criteria for the new platform that would be most beneficial to our families. Rated potential platforms that were being considered. We made a final recommendation on Final Site. School Board, it was a privilege to be a part of a team that values open communication and kept a united focus on equity for all of our families. And now David Reyes, our Family Center Coordinator, will share some more actions and progress on our data.
Thank you, Mr. Luis Camas. I can't get the smile off my face from listening to Connie and her experience with Mother Read, Father Read, so apologies if I'm smiling this whole time. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you about a few action steps that we've completed this specific school year. So we are in Year Two with Partnership with Colorado Education Initiative and we are focusing on enhancing the district-wide family partnership plan, more specifically to support staff and parent advocates so that they are best positioned to meet the needs of all families in our district. There was a task force that was put together that included educators, admin, parent advocates, community members, and also families as well. They all, each conducted empathy interviews to find common themes to support the development of this roadmap. It is crucial, and I'll say that again, like Luis said earlier, it's crucial that we listen to families and all stakeholders' wants and needs of the family partnership plan. It truly does take a village to educate all students. We've also created the Family Partnership Toolkit. The toolkit serves as a guide and framework to support site-based partnership plans that are unique to their individual family needs. The toolkit serves as a guide and a framework, like I said, to support family needs. The toolkit includes resources, documents, trainings, and step-by-step processes to learn about, from their families. This year, seven schools leveraged the toolkit to enhance their family partnership strategies while listening to families. Lastly, but most exciting, at least to me, some data points. So I'm pleased to share with you some data points of high-impact strategies. Voice visits for the first, they're intended to create positive relationships between families and staff. So as you can see, during the 22-23 school year, 214 staff members were trained in voice visits. That significantly increased during the 23-24 school year. 519 staff members were trained in voice visits. Empathy interviews, it provides an opportunity for staff to listen to families about hopes and dreams for students, building authentic relationships. During the 22-23 school year, 270 empathy interviews were conducted. 375 were conducted for the 23-24 school year. We get really good insight from families' wants and needs and helps us develop our family partnership plan at the school level. Mother Read, Father Read, as you heard about the impact from the parent family advocate and also the parent, one of the parents that participated. We expanded to seven schools and we have the intentions of working with Colorado Humanities to provide more training over the summer so that we can increase Mother Read, Father Read programming throughout our school district. Luis, back to you.
Thank you, David. And I appreciate everything that David and our team does for our district. It's a pleasure to be a part of that team as well. And now we will look at more data connected to our I-2030 outcome. The first is that by 2025, 85% of our families surveyed will indicate satisfaction within the school climate section of the annual parent survey. To provide our board with some background, this school year we had over 1,800 more responses than last school year. Analyzing the data from the past three years shows a consistently favorable rating ranging between 74% and 77%. Continuing to look at our outcome data, schools will include and implement a family engagement goal or strategy in their UIP. By analyzing this set of data, it's evident that there has been a substantial increase from 33% to 78% across our schools over the last three years. In terms of our data on training school sites for creating family partnerships and supporting student learning, we have seen a rise from 18% last school year to 44% this school year. We will continue to work with school sites to achieve this goal by 2027. To conclude Goal One of strengthening partnerships for parents and families, thank you, Dr. Dattery, we have identified the following steps. First, we will look at our Phase Three schools. We will work with our Phase Three schools to train staff in family engagement strategies. Our second step will be implementing the Enhanced Co-Created Strengthening Partnership Plan focused on developing the skills and capabilities of our parent advocates and staff. Our third step will be supporting schools with their family engagement action steps within their UIPs for next school year. We are so proud of the commitment and hard work that our staff throughout our district has done for our parents and families this school year. We believe that next school year, we'll have even greater opportunities for success and continue to strengthen our family partnerships in District Six. And now our Chief of Communications, Ms. Teresa Myers, will share information about Goal Two.
Well, thank you, everyone, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, board members. Next time we do strengthening partnerships, I am going to get Goal Number One because that's hard to follow. So, but we're doing some exciting work in this area as well. And I am very grateful to be able to work with this team as well. We do a lot of collaboration across these two goal areas. So as you can see, we have two main objectives under Goal Number Two, to develop and implement a district-wide plan to partner with businesses, community groups, and individuals, as well as develop and implement a plan for students and staff to contribute to the community. And by that, we generally mean volunteerism, but it can mean some other things too. Schools and district departments will implement a district-wide community partnership plan. That's the first outcome under here. And then District Six will support volunteerism by documenting and annually increasing the number of students and staff who engage in service to the community. So these are some of the actions that we've been continuing to work on as we implement this goal. To develop and implement a comprehensive community partnership plan for every school to implement, that's a lot of implements in there, sorry about that. But I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later because we've really made some good progress on that. We will, and then alongside that, we'll create a training plan for district leaders and sort of the champions in the building of these community partnership plans so that we can really try to ensure across the board that every school has the opportunity to have community partnerships that are two-way and mutually beneficial to everyone. And then we're going to create and implement guidelines for supporting and recognizing local businesses. We do some of that already, but it's kind of sporadic and we kind of want to get some protocols around that for our schools and for our district. And then, of course, we'll do, partially do that by creating a webpage on district and school sites to recognize our business partners, but that's certainly not the only way. We've got some creative ideas that we're coming up with in that area. And then additionally, actions will be to give students the opportunity and tools to contribute to the community through their school career and include that in their personalized learning plan. What we're finding is a lot of high school students already have a community service element that they need to complete either for a program they're in or a club or to qualify for a partner. I see our, our students are nodding over here, so I'm getting great confirmation. But that's what we're finding is students are really required to do community service for a variety of reasons, but we'd like to codify that in their personalized learning plans and maybe try to get that down to the, to the earlier levels of school, like middle and elementary school, to kind of give them an early entrance into what it means to get back to your community. So Annette Overton has been leading some of the work on the Volunteer for Staff program and they're calling that D6 Gives Back. And they've been meeting for quite a while. She has a team of people meeting on that. She's been working closely with Nelson Rodriguez, who actually oversees our volunteer program now. And they reviewed and contacted organizations who offer volunteer opportunities. Now, what we're looking at is partially this being an opportunity for staff to volunteer while on contract time. We know that that creates a challenge for some of our positions, but they're really studying like how we can make that possible. They're hoping to pilot this a little bit next year and see how it works. I mean, for some of us, obviously, like, for example, when Project Connect is on, we encourage our administrators to go out and volunteer for Project Connect because that serves a lot of our families in the community. And so occasionally our administrators will be able to take a couple hours off of their day and go over and volunteer there, but that'd be harder for a teacher who's teaching in a classroom. But we're looking at some creative ways that they might be able to use some PD time to maybe start their day at the Weld Food Bank if they wanted to. We've already had teachers do some of this. So we're still like looking at creative ways to be able to give staff, all of our staff, this opportunity to give back to the community if they want to. And then Annette's group also surveyed staff to collect data on what this volunteer program could look like, like how many hours would be appropriate, what kind of organizations we should target or, or that are in the community that would be willing Like, how many hours would be appropriate, what kind of organizations we should target or that are in the community that would be willing to work with us. You know, how we troubleshoot those relationships with community partners and philanthropic organizations throughout the community. And then, of course, we want to collect feedback because we want to know what this experience is like and how it's working and tweak that program as we go along. And then this is the work that I have been doing this year with a really great core team of community members, staff, district-level staff, school building staff. And we too worked with the Colorado Education Initiative to get this off the ground. Thank you, Stacy, for recommending them. They have been wonderful to work at. The woman that I have worked with on this has a tremendous amount of experience on community partnerships and what it means to create mutually beneficial community partnerships. But she has given us a wealth of information and resources to go to, as well as helped us write the initial plan that we will be using starting next semester. So the draft of the plan was reviewed by our team in March. We need to work on the final plan, really trying to tweak a couple things in that to customize it for District Six and what our schools need. And then we'll implement that plan and hopefully in a few pilot schools that are willing to give it a try. And then we'll do that training and see how it goes, get some feedback and hopefully tweak that. The real goal of this community partnership plan is to create a little more equity across the system. I think all of you know, you're in schools, you visit schools, some of them have a tremendous amount of partnerships and they have all kinds of things going in on their schools all the time. And some of our schools just do not, and it's for a variety of reasons. It takes time to cultivate true community relationships, and that's really what you have to do to really impact student achievement. So we're really looking at ways to support our administrators and whoever they designate in their school to take this duty on. It doesn't necessarily have to be the principal. It could be an assistant principal, it could be a parent advocate, it could be a teacher who's really interested in doing this kind of work. So we're looking at some different strategies for that. So our next steps, so our business and, like I said, our business and community partnership plan, we're hoping to find four or five schools to start to pilot that and get some feedback from them, see what's working, see what's not, see what sort of district-level support they need. I've been working very closely with Nelson Rodriguez on this. I think that we are really working to devise a plan that we can provide some district support to for these buildings as well. And Julie Hill has also been an amazing partner in this. You know, their work in the Success Foundation is very similar to this work, so we don't want to reinvent the wheel. So the three of us have kind of really gotten together and said, how can we support our schools in doing this? We hope to begin full implementation in the fall of 2026. As far as the student community service component goes, we're really working alongside the personalized learning plans to see if that needs to be included in there or how we can incorporate in there. And certainly how we can recognize students who are doing that kind of work throughout their career with us. And then Annette and her team are going to work on finalizing the volunteer plan for staff. Hope to have that a little bit more codified, but probably do a slow roll out on that and see how it goes. Like I said, some of it's already going on. I mean, we certainly encourage our staff to volunteer for different events and community partners, but really want to have some parameters around that and be able to recognize those volunteers for the service they're doing. So our outcome data for this is by May of 2027, 100% of the schools and district departments will implement a district-wide community partnership plan. Do want to point out that district departments, because that was recently added. And that was from feedback we got from our district leadership team that said, well, hey, we'd like to have a community partnership plan, too. As you can imagine, nutrition services works a lot with local vendors and different types of businesses, and those are partnerships, too. So we did add that in and we're hoping to train all of our departments on that as well. And then just a little bit more income data or outcome data. This is just how we will measure how many of the students, staff, and schools will be engaging in this activity. I'm guessing we're going to tweak this as we go along. I think we kept some of the numbers low, especially on the students and staff, not knowing kind of what the plan was going to look like. So didn't want to overstep our bounds, but those are certainly data points that we can edit as we go along. And I think that's all I had, but I'm sure any of us will be welcome to take any questions from you.
We have a few questions for you. And our first question comes from a student, Ms. Medellis, I think. Not you? Oh, Natalie.
Not a question, just a comment. I come from a bilingual household and stuff, and so I am very excited that the district has found a way to implement something so that parents can get involved because I wish I don't want to cry. I see my mom and Connie a lot, and when I first started kindergarten, it was very hard for my mom. And so now knowing that there's something, there's a program implemented for parents is something that I am truly grateful for. So Connie, estoy muy agradecida. Miro mi mama en usted. Ay, saqué de llorón a mi mamá. Pero estoy muy agradecida que el distrito la pudo ayudar a usted y a muchos padres para ayudarle a poder ayudar a su hijo. So, sí, es todo.
She was saying she's so grateful for the district to provide parents the opportunity to partner with our schools and to learn. So thank you to the school board and the leadership.
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, I just, every time I find out more of these programs and the services that the district is providing, it just really is awestruck and baffling to me. When you start your own business, everybody always says there's the things that get you, the unknown unknowns. And sometimes when you run for school board, the things that get you and cause you to put your foot in your mouth a little bit are the unknown unknowns. And what you don't know, you don't know. And so just to come in and find out the complexity and the diversity and the the complex problems that you guys have to deal with and issues you have to solve and to see the fine job you're doing at that is just really outstanding. And for a white, you know, well-off suburban dad to come in here and see the struggles and the hardships that you guys are facing on a day-to-day, just gives me a lot of confidence in our community that we're doing a good job. And, you know, I employ probably on the same ratio of Hispanic and Latina employees as the district, as children. And to know that my guys and their families are getting taken care of is just really, it provides a lot of confidence that we're in a good place and it makes me really proud to be part of Greeley.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Dr. Campos Spitsy.
Yo también quería expresar mis gracias porque de voluntaria vino y no es algo fácil venir a hablar aún en un cuarto así en otro idioma, ¿verdad? Pero dijo que a través del programa aprendió más confianza usted concepción y le veo que no tenía muchos problemas con la confianza. No le veo ni nervios, ni ansia, ni nada así. Pero también me recuerda, yo soy médica y hablo mucho con las familias durante mis citas clínicas acerca de la lectura y participar en la educación de los niños empezando a temprana edad al kinder. Y una historia que siempre me recuerdo que se destaca era durante COVID que había llegado una familia y la mamá muy educada de México y todo estaba en línea, ¿verdad? No estaban abiertas las escuelas, estaban cerradas. Y su hija en kinder tratando de aprender y estudiar en inglés en línea y su mamá se sentía tan inútil como tan... No le podía ayudar y lloraba porque quería poder ayudar y asistir a su hija con su aprendizaje. Pero en esos tiempos, imagínate, aún no era posible. Así que ahora, gracias a Dios, estamos de nuevo en las escuelas, en los edificios, pero aún más agradecida por programas así que están motivando a nuestros papás que a veces nos sienten. En nuestras familias latinas he visto yo que se sienten a veces las familias como pues el trabajo es de la maestra o del maestro para enseñarle a mis hijos, ¿qué voy a contribuir yo? Pero es tener a los padres en las escuelas y motivarlos a tener más alta participación en las escuelas y con los maestros y los administradores es de tanta importancia. Es una de las razones que yo estoy aquí. Pero sí te quiero agradecer porque no es pequeña cosa que acabas de hacer y por ser campeona de este programa, que en verdad ya hemos oído de la escuela de Maplewood y también de Vela Romero, que tienen el Mother Read, Father Read, y ahora esta es la tercera escuela que nos ha contado de sus historias de éxito en Chapo. Muy agradecida por el programa y muy emocionada que va a poder expandir a más de siete escuelas. Y qué buena oportunidad de traer a padres a las escuelas para quebrar esa barrera. Aunque quizás no sea a continuación del programa, pero ahora el padre ha estado adentro de la escuela. Ya no se van a intimidar quizás tanto de venir a hablar con los maestros y tener mejor comunicación, pues. Así que muchísimas gracias.
And just to speak to the other things, so impressed with the increase in the voice visit numbers and the empathy interview numbers. And the platform that we're, the communication platform we're looking at where, you know, to have two-way communication and the possibility in over 100 languages, which, as we know, our district has at least 70 of those. So so proud of the work you guys are doing.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Ms. Mash.
I just also wanted to say muchos gracias, Connie, for sharing your story and the courage and confidence that you've shown will be so inspirational to your student. And I just look forward to hearing about how you both are learning along the way. Maybe I missed this, but the Mother Read, Father Read program, is it just a one-time thing or can parents take it again? How does that work? I don't know who wants to answer that.
They can do it whenever they want to. It's more focused through preschool to grade, second grade, but really they can implement those to any grade available. We just had kind of like a pilot, like the first time that we did it at Chapo and actually also did the Maplewood one at the same time. But our plan is to do it every single year with different parents. Or if the parents want to go, we actually give them tools to like kind of help us out and guide the class. So it's really even more meaningful if they do it again.
Awesome. Thank you. I also wanted to express excitement for final site. I currently have five apps on my phone and my kids go to the same school. Somehow I still get all of those different methods of communication. So I think it's going to be great to have that streamlined. I was curious if you have an idea as to why you had 1,800 more responses? Did we do a lot of reaching out or marketing for the survey or?
So I will tell you that that is work that every principal has been a part of. Our school assessment coordinators really take charge of the panorama surveys at the building level. And I will just give a shout out to our Director of Assessment, Ginny Jensen, who really spearheads that work. It's just, you know, people really making it a priority and providing ways at the schools at those times when maybe they have more parents at their school site and they say, all right, let's set up some computers, let's set up some ways and opportunities for parents to take it right then and there while they are there with us, in addition to just pushing it out several times and really making it a priority in their newsletters, just multiple different ways that our principals were doing that and supported in making sure they are giving, are taking that survey. So thanks for noticing. It is a, it's a good, it gives us good data points.
Absolutely. And then the last comment I have is just, I'm really pleased to see that we are looking for ways that we can give back to the community. We do have so many partnerships and we've been supported and loved so well by the communities of Greeley and Evans. And so I look forward to seeing how we can, how we can give back even in a small way. So thank you for that work as well.
Mr. Ozari.
Just a quick question for Teresa. How do we currently show appreciation to businesses and community partners? You had mentioned that. Just what do we do currently?
That's a great question. Thank you, Mr. Ozari. It's really kind of all over the board and that's kind of what we're trying to codify in some best practices for our schools. Some of them are great. I mean, you'll drive by schools and you'll see banners thanking their sponsors hanging on their fences. A lot of them do thank them on their websites or have signage within their schools. I think we're looking to deepen that a little bit. When we're talking about two-way partners now, I think we're really talking about our leaders and our business and community partners and faith partners that we have in our schools really sitting down and having a conversation about what each entity would like to get out of the partnership and what they're doing it for and why. And we really are going to try to get our school leaders to focus on really student achievement. Like, what can you do to support student achievement? And in some schools, that may be filling basic needs like food and clothing and hygiene products or, you know, watching kids after school, helping with after-school programs. But in some schools, that may be a deeper part of their UPI, you know, like UIP, I'm sorry, UPI, UIP. You know, what do they need to improve in their school and how can that community partner partner with them on that? So we're really trying to get deeper on that. So it's not just about recognition, although I think that's super important. And we're hoping that, like a lot of schools, will have a recognition event even at the end of the year, not only for their community partners, but for volunteers in the school. But I think we're really trying to deepen that partnership so that, so that partner is getting whatever they need out of that and the school is getting whatever they need out of that. And that's a constant conversation. So we're encouraging some really different practices around that. More meetings with partners like quarterly to update each other. I'm really connected with a new, not a new organization, but new to me called School Connect Arizona. They're doing some really innovative work around this. So I think we're really looking at doing things a little bit differently.
Any other questions from board members? I don't see any, so I will simply say thank you again for this presentation. Thank you for this work. This is, we have an incredibly supportive community. We have churches and schools and parents who spend hours and hours in our schools. And so we very much appreciate all that our community does for this district. And if there are ways that we can, we can better facilitate that and better give back, we are certainly glad that you guys are working on that. So moving right along on our agenda. We actually need to move backward on our agenda for just a second. And I would like to invite Ms. Amy Long back to the podium. She has a student with her. Part two of our presentation. Thank you for coming back, Ms. Long.
Yes, thank you so much. So it's good to see you all again. Roy Vargas is here and he had to be late because, right? Why don't you tell them what you were up to?
I was doing something with FFA. So that's pretty much the reason I was kind of late.
So he's super involved in our school. Why don't you tell them a little bit about yourself? Like what grade you're in, what are your interests? And then Roy brought his poem.
Roy, could you speak into the microphone for us? Make sure we can hear you. Thank you.
So my name is Roy Vargas. I'm currently in the 11th grade for Greeley West. And so I brought here my poem, which was one of the ones selected, which I'm kind of proud of it. So, so pretty much that's it. If there's any questions for me, I don't know.
Do you feel comfortable reading your poem or?
Ah, yeah.
Okay.
So this is my poem. Does it have a name? So I'm pretty sure I read it aloud. "I don't know what I'm doing. I'm lost. I need help, but I won't ask for it. I always find my way without knowing." That's pretty much it. It's very short. But yeah, it's for my voice. I'm pretty much kind of sick for it and I just got it back. So that's why I sound kind of rough. Any questions?
Ms. Mash has a question.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Have you written poetry before? Is that something you were interested in?
Actually, no. I was not planning on taking this class. I pretty much took it because it was one of the options. But I'm pretty grateful, you know, for actually choosing this class, you know, because before this, I genuinely never wrote a poem before. This is pretty much, I think, my first one that I actually tried on and for it, be my first one and being one of the ones selected. I think it's very cool, you know. No more questions?
I don't see any other questions for you, but thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for showing courage and reading your poetry out loud. We greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members. And we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Each board member, our board members typically will not respond or engage in discussion, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, not through individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect. And we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech. And speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, or other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. With that read, our first speaker tonight is Mr. David Neat.
Thank you all.
Welcome, Mr. Neat.
Yeah, thank you all again. You said earlier, what do our students need? Well, our students need, especially you as a board and all the rest of you, because you all are kind of educated idiots in this together to put porn books back in is unbelievable to me. But what we really need is for you all to teach the truth of God's Word in every subject. Okay? Every subject. That's what we need. This is Holocaust week. I've actually been to Dak now, so I have to go back. You know, you think Holocaust would make us to wake up to realize the same thing is happening to America right now that happened? And just like you see here, you see probably one pastor that's here tonight speaking up, just like it did in Germany. His name was Dietrich Bonhoeffer. If you've ever seen his story, his movie, you should. Because all the other pastors were fearful, just like they are today, even in Greeley, Colorado. Somebody finally told me the other day, we have big pastors of big churches in this community who do not want the Bible in schools. They're a bunch of hypocrites. And that's what you find in Matthew 20, Matthew 23rd. They call them snakes and hypocrites, which is some of you fall in that category. Because you refuse to teach the truth that you know about to our kids. You think the Holocaust would wake us up? You think Columbine would wake us up? I haven't got much time, have I? How about 2018, when you up there in the office voted six to one not to put the Bible in schools? And that year, you had three suicides in the three high schools right here that I'm aware of. And the one little girl that hung herself on the swing at Christie McCullough. And the little eight-year-old boy that fell off the ladder in Windsor with their.
Mr. Neat, Mr. Neat.
Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Mr. Steve Teetz. Welcome, Mr. Teetz. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. It's been a while. For your record, my name is Steve Teetz. I'm in Greeley. This school district, I think in the next five years, is going to be overcrowded with students. With, we don't, if we don't prepare for it. With the, the population growth with our citizens, and then you have the undocumented immigrants coming in as well. We, we need to be prepared for it. Also, what the problem is too, is that we will need more school buses, oh, more schools, first of all, school buses and drivers. And also the Greeley Evans Transit needs to put more buses on their road, on their routes to, can't remember my own writing, for the, but city to, they, they need to put more bus routes on the road, buses on the road for their students to compensate for the students. But to me, they're penny-pinching because they have not done that. And we've been having this problem for many years. Also, understand that parents can choose what school that their kids can go to, which puts more pressure on the school buses and also on the Greeley Transit. So I'm saying is that we need to be prepared for an onslaught of students. And we need to have transportation to be able to get them to school, back home, and also to not have so much stress on our bus systems, if it's a school bus or the Greeley Evans Transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teetz. Next tonight, we have Ms. Davina Huntley. Welcome, Ms. Huntley. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. My name is Davina Huntley. I have a daughter that attends Prairie Heights Middle School. Dating back to at least November of 2023, my daughter has been targeted, harassed, mistreated, and unfairly punished by the staff and administration of Prairie Heights. I have made several complaints, had several phone conversations and meetings. I've sent countless emails and worked my way up the chain of command to no avail. School is out in a month and no change has taken place. That makes five months that the district has allowed this behavior to take place. And because of it, my daughter is suffering. I could go into specifics, but time won't allow. I've missed work. She's missed school. She's had to be started on medication and therapy as a direct result of these issues. She no longer feels safe going to school because she thinks the mistreatment will escalate since nothing has been done and it seems that no one cares. Her last year of middle school has been turned into a terrible experience and she no longer enjoys school. Online school and homeschooling aren't an option for us and it shouldn't have to be considered, nor should switching schools. I am a very involved parent with all of my children. I don't miss meetings, conferences, concerts, sporting events. I volunteer for field trips and field days. Sorry. I sit on both the SAC and DAC committees and I helped to start the Black Family Affinity Group within District Six. Comments are consistently made about my involvement and dedication to my children. So stopping this fight for my daughter isn't an option, but I am fresh out of ideas and resources and I still need something done. My daughter and I need help getting results. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huntley. That concludes our public participation tonight. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. We'll need a motion.
A move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any. So Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next tonight, in our board priorities, is a motion to cancel Board of Education meeting for June 24th, 2024. And this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six cancels the Board of Education meeting scheduled for June 24th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this motion? Sign none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next tonight on our agenda is our 2024-2025 District Six Certified Staff Master Contract Agreement. And this too is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the tentative agreements to be incorporated into the 2024-25 District Six Master Contract. These tentative agreements include the adoption of the salary schedules as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. I see Ms. Overton is back at the, at the podium. But Dr. Pilch, is there anything you need to say by way of introduction?
If I may, please, sir. I just, I will just share that, as you all know, a significant part of our strategic plan is to recruit, attract, and hire, and retain staff in the district. And primarily, we focus first on teachers because what works for teachers then also begins to work for other staff here in the district. So as you look at, at each of the areas where we have a memorandum of understanding, each of these are in an effort to better support and retain staff here in the district. The, the Time and Learning Committee and the report you're here tonight really was about getting teachers more planning time. We've heard over and over again that, that the load that teachers have, especially after COVID, and the work that they have in implementing new curriculum, they need time. And they need time for their own planning. And so the first piece is, and as Ms. Overton and Ms. Snyder will share with you, is about making sure that we're giving time to teachers on those Monday morning late starts to do the work that is, that is so important for them to do, to be ready for the classroom. And then some additional planning time throughout the year in half-day segments was also a part of this agreement, which means we're bringing students back two days earlier, which the, the presenters tonight will go into in more detail. The Systems of Support for Students and Staff piece really is about ensuring that our teachers and, and other staff in the, in the buildings are able to best serve the students they have coming in every single day to their classroom and to ensure that that learning continues. So over the next year, you will hear not only the things that we, we've agreed to in the memorandum of understanding out of negotiations, but you will hear the efforts that we are taking in those areas to really ensure we're providing supports to students and to staff in our buildings so that every student can learn. And then finally, compensation. We're really proud to be able to bring you a compensation offer tonight that does increase our base salary to $52,000. This will keep us competitive with our neighboring large districts here in the area. We still will be surpassed, even, even if Pooter does not increase their, their pay, we still will be slightly under Pooter School District. I think that Thompson and District Six will come in very close to one another. Thompson, neither Pooter nor Thompson have settled their contracts, so we remain to, to see where they are. We're very proud of, as teachers move through our system with longevity, we do compensate very well. And so we believe, once we get teachers here, that we're able to keep them throughout their career. And, and that's, that's a great hope that we have here in District Six. But this has been significant work that we've done in certainly the last nine years that, that I've been here in the district. We've seen our, our salary schedule become more and more competitive. And at the end of the day, we've got to be able to hire teachers and get them into our classrooms, quality teachers who are standing in front of students every single day. I want to, I want to give a shout out again to our negotiations team, to the teachers, the administrators, and to you all who served for two, two and a half days. And, and the work that you all did together, we all did together in those days that we came in together. We do, as you all know, use our consensus model for negotiations. And we've been able to solve some very complex problems with, with that model. And just really proud of the team. And I, I thank you all. Glad to have you here tonight, Mrs. Overton and Mrs. Snyder. And I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. It's exciting for us to be here tonight, Erin and Meat, because we have had great opportunities to work with you all and work alongside each other to solve problems. As Dr. Pilch said, we're excited about the great work that was done during negotiations. And tonight, we're going to talk about the tentative agreements. The tentative agreements that we've made through the negotiations time. In the master contract, we review annually the adjustments for formatting, updates, language, legal changes, and impacts as needed. For example, we adjusted the communication plan for horizontal advancement and added the information about who to contact during Title IX situations. Reports on the annual progress as well as recommendations for next year for each committee were given. These committees include, as Dr. Pilch mentioned, time and learning, systems of support, and then compensation. One of the committees in the master contract this year will be utilized to continue problem-solving and maintaining communication between the association and the district administrators. That team is called the Solutions Communication Council.
I don't know how to turn that thing. Thank you. Well, first of all, I also want to say thank you, Board, Dr. Pilch, student reps. I think it's, there's a lot to be said for your willingness to participate in the negotiations and listen and to hear just as much as administration and educators being vulnerable and sharing those stories and working together. So I want to just recognize you for participating and acknowledging and sharing and, and being willing to collaborate with those problems. Dr. Pilch, I could have just said ditto to all the things that you said, but I do want to say thank you to all of you and our educators who are willing to share their stories and the admin and being vulnerable in those. So I do appreciate that. The language changes that we're talking about in the master contract include things, oh, I'll wait, include things like the salary schedule, which Dr. Pilch also alluded to earlier. Our salary schedule really rocks. In Weld County, we nailed it. We've got every five-year increments. We also have a higher percentage for that longevity piece that I'm not sure that Dr. Pilch said out loud, but that's a big deal for those of us who have been here for a while and recognizing our commitment to our students in D6. So that's a big deal. Also, our salary schedule is, we can have the potential to reach our highest earnings sooner than later compared to other surrounding districts. So our salary schedule really is a big deal and it's sustainable. So I appreciate your willingness and efforts in making sure that that can happen for us. The other thing Annette already talked about, the horizontal advancement and the communication. You already talked about all those things. Oh, yeah. And then the, the committees for the time and learning and the systems of support. We're just updating those. We're keeping them. I think they started in like 2017, 2018. So we'll keep them and their mission statement or their purpose statement will change.
For the, each of the committee reports, we want to give just a little bit of an update. For the Systems of Support Committee, they charged Human Resources with reviewing support that, that reviewed support that certified new hires receive when they are initially employed with the district. We are going to look at this as a task force with GEA membership and with the district administration to find, identify, find gaps or identify gaps that we may have in our onboarding process, that induction process, and that ways that we can enhance an early educator's experience with District Six so they feel prepared and successful during their first year in District Six. The negotiations team also agreed that supporting staff as they manage student learning and behavior is an area that can be developed even further. The academic achievement team, as well as the mental health team, is looking at, they are looking at key intervention strategies and how to, how a support team could be best utilized in assisting our teachers and our principals at each of our sites. The committee recommends that we review policies and procedures to, to find alignment across what we do, as well as review panorama data and to determine best practices that happen in the classroom. Currently, the district is reviewing the best way to monitor and evaluate the comprehensive intervention-prevention-support system.
We really do work well together. It's just, this is, we don't do this every day. So time and learning, Dr. Pilch mentioned adding the two individual planning days to our calendar through the Time and Learning Committee, especially at the elementary level, just having those additional planned days spread out throughout the year, hopefully like around quarter ending so that there is time to wrap it up and prep and plan for everything that's coming next, I think will be huge. We're going to continue to do the Late Start Mondays, which also will be really meaningful for those of us who are working with little people every day. And then our focused professional development. I've heard lots of good things about this. So we have asked for intentional, meaningful professional development in recognizing that our students today are different than students that we've had in the past. And I think everybody's pretty excited about understanding our students now versus yesterday.
So Dr. Pilch talked briefly about the committee, the committee on compensation. And agreement was reached with all of us on the compensation committee that we must remain competitive statewide, but for sure in northern Colorado. After reviewing how other districts compensate their employees, we, there was agreement that we would increase the base salary to, the schedule to $52,000. All salary schedules that are impacted by this base will be changed and all employees will see an increase in pay. Benefits were also addressed during these compensation conversations to make sure that everyone was aware of the great benefits that were offered and our benefit rates.
Hopefully, you guys can see the new salary schedule, or you can see the little green highlights that I was talking about for the five-year increments, and you can see that it doesn't, many, like, I think somebody told me the other day that there's a district nearest that has 30 steps to get down all the way to the highest, and then to move over, we've reduced that quite a bit and still offer lots of professional development that help us be the best that we can be. I already said all the other highlights of that. I do want to say that GEA membership has voted to ratify this contract that's presented, and although not all of our ideas to support students and staff are listed here and in the master contract, but because of our collaboration, I believe that we will continue to be the best that we can be for all of our students and our staff.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you both. I bet we have a few questions for you. I know Dr. Campos Pitsy has one.
So, just excited to see the salary increase, and also, that was really informative, Erin, about the step five, step 10. You know, we talk sometimes about retention bonuses or that type of thing, but it looks somewhat built in to the steps, which is really cool. And was also really happy to see the focus on our current students and some of the behavior, behaviors that we're seeing post-COVID for that being a focus of professional development. I think that's excellent, being responsive to the state of things.
Yeah, I'm also very excited about that. And we did those five-year increments a couple of years ago, very intentionally to recognize that. Those steps are 3.75, so it's a pretty big deal.
Any other questions or comments from board members? As they're thinking about that, I'll just say this. Dr. Pilch says all the time, you cannot, can't be average in this district. Our teachers cannot be average. We cannot afford for them to be average. And so, it is, it is great to see the progress we've made in paying our teachers and providing the time that they need for them to do the work, because we all know it takes a lot more work than eight to three, or whichever, eight-ten to three-ten, or whatever it is for each school. But I think when I came on the board, it was our teaching, our teachers, our starting teacher salary was less than $40,000. And so, just in that short amount of time, we've gone from less than 40 to over 50. And I so appreciate the ability to do that, to be able to go out and hire and retain very talented teachers, and we do think we have above-average teachers in this district. So again, thank you, guys, for your work. We're very proud of the work that you do and what we're able to offer our teachers in this contract.
Thank you. We're also very proud. I will say, you know, we have a master contract because of our association and our union. We wouldn't be able to work together like that, but we really, like, we stand out. When I go to my Colorado Education Association meetings and stuff, what we've been able to do is really a big deal. So, like, in the union world, it's go, fight, win. For us, I feel like we sit, share, and solve. So, good job for you guys as well.
I'm not seeing, seeing, thank you, Erin. I'm not seeing anything else, so, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Finally, tonight is the revision to the 2024-2025 and the 2025-2026 school year calendars that will be necessitated, I imagine, by what we just, what we just approved. And so, we need a motion to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education agree that Greeley Evans School District Six approves the tentative agreements. Oh, sorry, mine went off. My bad. One more. Rewind. I move that the Board of Education agree that Greeley Evans School District Six revises the 2024-2025 school year calendar and the 2025-2026 school year calendar as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say in advance, or should we turn this over to Ms. Overton?
Do you need me to?
No.
Okay. I don't need to. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and they'll cover the highlights.
I'm excited to have the co-chairs for the committee, the calendar committee, here with us. There's Christina Crane and Erin Snyder. And tonight, both of the co-chairs are here. They'll be answering questions for us if we have, if you have any at the end of our presentation, but tonight really is about board policy, IC and ICA. It's, gives us the guidance for providing the calendar support that we need. We're just making an update to the calendar that you have already approved earlier this year, and we're here to ask for that approval. Our purpose of the calendar action steps tonight is to help us respond to staff who told us that they need more time to work for student, towards student achievement. Teachers and counselors shared with the negotiations team that they have a lot of work to plan for students, to simply need more time, they need simply more time to collaborate, more time to do planning, and do the work that they need, that they know will increase student achievement. The team then began the work of determining how to add that time to the calendar. The calendar committee has reviewed and added action steps from negotiations, and they too recommend these, the proposal given tonight. The three parts of the negotiations proposal are listed here. The student's school year starts two days earlier. The teachers will receive two additional planned days that are non-student contact days. The committee recommended that the day off in October be moved to the 24th so that a longer weekend could be enjoyed by both students and staff. And this means that the, in October, they will have a three-day weekend instead of a four-day weekend. The calendars proposed tonight mirror one another. The 2019, the 2024, 2025 calendar and the 2025-26 calendar are very similar in content and approach. The highlights for the calendar for the 2024 and 25 calendars is, are listed here. The school year for the first through 12th grade students starts two days earlier, Monday, August 12th, and kindergarten students, Thursday, August 15th. The new certified staff will begin Tuesday, July 30th, for New Professionals Academy, and all teachers then return on Monday, August 5th. Teachers have two additional days for individual planning, as we've mentioned, and Dr. Pilch mentioned earlier. During negotiations, these teachers ask to have these two days spread over four half-days over the course of a year. The committee's proposing that the teachers would have their new individual plan time on September 23rd, October 14th, and then January 6th after winter break, and then March 7th before spring break. The rolling start has been eliminated from both calendars. The four-day weekend in April offers a little break before the end of the school year and was greatly appreciated when we got feedback from both teachers and classified staff. That is the proposal for tonight. Are there any questions that our committee can answer?
Not seeing anybody with any questions at this point, Ms. Overton. I think this is pretty self-explanatory to us, and we understand why we're making these changes, and so...
Great, thank you.
I don't, doesn't look like anybody has any, so I will just say thank you. Thank you for making those changes and making this clear for us. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, that's all the business that we have tonight. Thank you for joining us. This meeting is adjourned.